Fourth to fifth grade transition, we've made a lot of changes over the last couple of years with the help of teacher input, some student input, and then also some parent input about what their children need to feel comfortable and ready to start at Deer Path. So, we always have Buddy Day, we've had it for years and years and years, but we've changed the program to make sure that students are coming to Deer Path and they feel that they have a place here. So, we're going to talk a little bit about the goals related to our Buddy Day program, and then also Web Day, which is where everyone belongs. And that is something that happens right before school starts, and then the students are going to share their experience about being a Buddy class as like a fourth grader, but then also what they're excited about for fifth grade. Okay, next. So, like I said, the goals for the Buddy Day program is really to ensure that all students are excited about their transition to Deer Path, but also are feeling comfortable and like they have a place at Deer Path. So, we focus really heavily now on how they can get involved, what do we have to offer that may be different from the elementaries, and how can they find a place for themselves at Deer Path? We want to make sure that when they come to Deer Path for the first day, they have a lot of familiar faces, and so that's their Buddy class, which is a fifth grade class that they're paired up with as a fourth grader, but then also for Web Day, that is an eighth grade student they are paired up with for the day before, or the weekend before school starts. And then, that's another familiar face that they'll have when they come to school in August.
Go to the next one. Oh, thank you. So Buddy Day is really like Megan was saying, is the opportunity to get kids excited about coming to middle school. And what we always say is that it doesn't matter if you're a Cherokee Cheetah, a Sheridan Shark, an Everett Eagle, you're all going to be a Deer Path Brave. And we try to get them very excited for this next chapter of their educational career. So, there's so much at Deer Path to explore that are new opportunities, and we really try to highlight those for the kids. So whether it's highlighting our band orchestra choir opportunities, and we use that as a chance to promote all the wonderful things we do with the arts, as well as the various sports and clubs, and then they really get to see the building. So many of them, if they don't have siblings who are at Deer Path, it is obviously a very large spread out building, and they get to walk around, see that it is really a small school in a very big building for them to just feel more comfortable easing in in the summer. And then, if you go to the next one, oh, it worked, okay. And then, that's capped off after Buddy Day, we have what's called Web Day, which stands for Where Everybody Belongs. And this is really our opportunity for our eighth grade students that have been through all of Deer Path Middle School to share their wisdom that they've accumulated over their time in middle school. So, they serve as the mentors for the new kids, they get to go in their little pods of advisories, so they're making those connections again, no matter what elementary they came from, and really form those familial classroom communities right from the start, so when school is about to begin, they feel like they already have their toe in the shallow end, and they're ready to experience all that middle school has to offer. But the important thing is that we have wonderful fifth graders to share about their experience firsthand.
Hi, I'm Winston Thelman, in fifth grade. The first question that she wanted me to fill out was, what do you like about Buddy Day as a fourth grader? I said I liked how I got to meet some teachers and kids, mainly because my buddies introduced me to teachers. Also, I learned my ways around the school, but also I got to know the sixth graders, the now sixth graders. Second question, how did it feel you, how did it help you feel successful as a fourth grader? I felt powerful with my success. Most of it was I knew people, and I wasn't just going into a place where I didn't know anyone or anything. The third question was, what are you excited about in relation to being a Buddy this year? I want to tell the now fourth graders anything and everything that will make them successful. Because I didn't know everything to make me successful, so I want to make them have the most success they can. Also, I can help fourth graders to be the best they can.
Hi, I'm Milo Zies from fifth grade, and the first question was, what do you like about Buddy Day as a fourth grader? I like that they toured me, that toured their school to me, so that I could get to know all the classrooms and all the teachers. And they also toured the seventh, the sixth, seventh, and eighth side, so I could know around the school, not just for fifth grade, but for sixth, seventh, and eighth. The second question was, how did it help you feel successful as a fourth grader? It helped me prepare for DPM, so I could be more successful. They told me the materials that I would need for like BLC, or your classes, and like your encores. And they also gave me techniques, like using a planner and having a notebook to jot things down. They also showed me not just fifth grade, but sixth and seventh and eighth. The third question was, what are you excited about in relation to being a Buddy this year? I am excited about meeting with the fourth graders and telling them what they need for your fifth grade. I can tell them what they need for materials for their classes, and then I can also tour them around the school, just like the buddies in sixth grade now did for me.
My name is Phoebe O'Shea, and I'm a fifth grader at Deer Path. One thing about Buddy Day that I enjoyed was when the fifth graders, or the then-fifth graders, told us about how it feels to be a fifth grader and how to be successful. It helped me prepare myself for fifth grade, and it gave me a small idea of what fifth grade would look like, and it helped me think about what success would be like for myself. Buddy Day helped me feel successful because it helped me know what I was going to do and how to be ready for it. I felt better knowing another student at DPM and an older student. It helped me get more familiar with DPM, and I got good advice on how to stay on top of my assignments. I'm excited to teach a fourth grader about fifth grade and how they can be successful as a fifth grader. I know it will help them feel comfortable going into fifth grade, and I'm excited to meet someone new, and I can give them the same great Buddy Day experience that I had as a fourth grader.
Hi, I'm Annelie Oberska, I'm a fifth grader at DPM. I like really liked that like we could have Buddy Day because like I could actually visualize how DPM was like, because I was really scared, because I was like really blank about like what was going to be there, or like what, like how it was going to like be. And that made me like have a good plan about what I could do when I was an actual fifth grader. It made me, it made me very successful because I knew more like around the school than how I didn't before, because I got really scared that I didn't know where like anything was. I thought it would be really hard, but this motivated me more to like be, like to try harder. I'm excited to like be one of like the buddies, because I can make them more successful so that they can have a good time at DPM.
Hi, I'm Reagan Klug, a fifth grade student at DPM. Buddy Day was fun because we got to see our role models. They also taught us all about fifth grade and how great it is. I felt successful being taught about how to be a fifth grader and how to get ready for the school year. I'm excited to tell the fourth graders all about fifth grade and how fun it is, and tell them how nice the teachers are and how you can be a successful student.
I just have one last thing to say, I just wanted to say thank you so much to the APT because they have supported this effort over the last several years. They provided balloons and streamers, and every student gets a T-shirt with a class, with their graduating year on it, so it just builds that sense of belonging right from the beginning, and a lot of those students wear it on the first day of school, or for Web Day when they come in the fall. And so, it's just a really wonderful support system that we have from the APT. So, thank you very much from the APT.
Thank you very much. I think if you guys can join us for a photo at the front, that would be terrific. I believe it's my turn to give a president's report. Welcome, everyone. I'm hoping very much that tonight's meeting will be slightly less eventful than our last meeting, although I enjoyed sharing shelter space with the lacrosse team. And I was very impressed by the fact that everyone, including those who were here to make public comments last month, stayed with us throughout the tornado drill, not drill, real, real warning. And although the meeting wasn't held in the boardroom, we did manage to record and post our meeting from the basement, in case anybody wishes to hear it, it should be posted on our website. It's hard to believe that now, here we are, just a few days left to go in winter, and a few more days until spring break, and I hope that everyone is able to take off time to rest and recharge their batteries, preferably somewhere warm during the week off. This evening, I'd like to use my remarks to say a few words in support of a few members of our administration who deserve our gratitude and recognition. The first person on my list is Ms. Tiana Adams. Hi, yep. We're talking about you, our board clerk, keeper of all board rules and schedules, planner of board meetings, drafter of minutes, and I'm sure most taxingly patient responder to questions from fourteen board members in advance of every meeting. Tiana, who we congratulate tonight on her upcoming wedding, is a steady, calm force on this team. She seems to work a little bit more than 24 hours a day, and is always here with an answer to questions about board rules and procedure when we need them. This is just the work that she does for the board, and I am not even going to try to talk about her second job of working directly with our superintendent, but let me just say that we all know who really runs things around here. Thank you, Tiana, for everything you do for us. Congratulations again, we are so happy to celebrate you, and I believe Alice has a little gift.
Tiana, on behalf of the District 67 Board, we want to congratulate you on your upcoming wedding, and to have a little something for you to celebrate.
My second word of thanks tonight is to Ms. Melissa Oakley, another force of nature who seems to work more than there are hours in the day. If you ever go to any sort of District 67 event, Melissa likely made it happen, and is there with a calm smile and a camera, there's usually coffee and donuts too, to make sure that everything goes right. If there's a crisis or a need to share information with the community, she moves quickly, and more quickly than one would think possible, to communicate honestly and openly about what's going on. She's incredibly thoughtful, is genuinely committed to keeping lines of communication open within our district, and is a joy to work with. So, thank you for everything you do. And I'll get to others in the cabinet at a later meeting, but tonight I also just want to end with thanking our superintendent, Dr. Montgomery. He also seems to work seven days a week, and in fact, the board has really had to encourage him at times to take his vacation time, because he really loves being at work. He's tasked with making difficult decisions, and is often the recipient personally of blowback if people either disagree with his approach or what's happening in the district. It's really hard in, under those circumstances, to remain focused on big picture goals set by our community through our strategic plan, and yet he's shown a willingness to follow through with his goals, with our goals, even when he's had to make hard decisions as a result. He also reports to two boards, making time to meet monthly with all fourteen of us, and he answers a lot of questions from the community and all of those board members. I highlight these three people today because I want those listening to understand how hard these individuals, as do other members of our cabinet and administration, how hard they work on behalf of your kids. They have to make difficult decisions, which do not always render them popular. They work long hours showing up to evening events and responding to calls and emails that come in over the weekend. We do not often, and not often enough, pause to say thank you for going above and beyond in so many ways, and I thought tonight was a good moment to do that. With that, I wish everyone a happy spring, a wonderful spring break, and I look forward to finishing our year strong. Now, turning it to you for your report. It better be good, because I just said a lot of nice things about you.
You've set the bar now. Thank you, Annie, that was unexpected and most appreciated, thank you from the bottom of my heart. Okay, work is my life and hobby sometimes, in addition to my beautiful family that I count my blessings for every day, and I'm excited tonight to talk to you about a couple topics. The first one is, we have been analyzing, we always analyze data, but we've had a particular focus as the new wave of winter data became available to the district in December. And we shared out some of that data, not only at the February 29th District 67 Education Committee meeting, but we also shared it at the APT full meeting last week in Croya. Some of the highlights are looking at our growth across each building and tracking it to where we were last year. I am most pleased with where we are from a global sense of the improvement that we're making from where we left last year to where we are middle of this year, while still striving for continued growth in the coming months ahead of the final testing window. We are excited to see where we are in terms of, you can see the column for expected growth for each building, and the percentage of meeting the benchmark is higher than what it was when we left for last summer break. There are areas of focus, so you can see right now in the five, six wing of Deer Path, we learned that there are some things that we needed to make some adjustments immediately after winter break because of the data that we saw. For example, in fifth grade, the schedule is slightly different for fifth grade than that of sixth, in that social studies and language arts are a combined period that allows some flexibility of how many instructional minutes they're spending on each subject matter. So, we firmed up with the fifth grade team the instructional minutes that we want solely dedicated to the new ELA program, and making sure that we are implementing that new curriculum with fidelity, and we think that our spring scores will be reflective of those changes. The next slide is looking at our FastBridge data, and you can see in the first section of each grade band, so you can see grades one, two, three, four, and five. Know that the left-hand side is 22, 23 data, and then on the right-hand side, within each grade band, is the 23, 24 data. What you want to look for is, are the percentages, particularly in the pink and the red, are they lower than they were in the previous school year? So, you can see progress in grades one, two, three, four, and again in five, we're seeing that we're questioning how many, how much time are we dedicating to the ELA, and is it getting the much, as much time as is that of the sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade? So, this district has been more focused on data than I would say in the recent past with our data teams at each building, that's coordinated directly with our building leadership teams and our building leaders, as well as our district leadership team, which brings me to our continual monitoring of our strategic plan. The board will receive in this weekly update, a status update on each one of the goals and objectives, and whether or not we believe we are on target with progress or not, and if not, why. And then, we will be seeking feedback from the Board of Education after you see it in this week's update for a adjustment or feedback that we gather from you, any changes we need to make on this progress monitoring in the April meeting. So, we want to show the community and the board how we believe we're progressing, not only on our strategic plan goals, but also the data we're seeing real time with both map testing and FastBridge ahead of our state assessments with the IAR. The board received an update from Paul Fallon and Fallon Research at the board workshop highlighting our recent public opinion research results, and I am thrilled to share that we are continually, continue to see progression from our years past community satisfaction polls, with 66% of our population saying that they view our schools as excellence or good. And if you hone in on parents from the subgroup, 78 or near 80% of those parents are rating excellent or good for our school system. That is something that many districts across the country would be longing for, to get numbers this favorable. It does not mean that we've arrived, it doesn't mean that we are resting on our laurels. What it does means is that, what it does reflect is that in a global sense, the community is pleased with the direction we're headed, while still acknowledging that we have many areas that we are working to improve for our student and community experiences. On the 115 front, you know that the referendum is underway, and this is just a quick update that there will be a referendum project community session or presentation on April 11th at 6:30 at the LFHS Little Theater. The reason I share it with you is, as this is a four or five-year project, many of the students that are currently in 67 will reap the benefits of this referendum work at the high school, and we want our community to be informed of our project. Last week, the board just approved the first set of enabling bids for the work that's starting this summer, and I am thrilled to share with you that we were, I'm going to say approximately $1 million under what we had estimated to be, which is always, we want to be on time and at least on budget, hopefully under budget, and when you have bids come back that favorably, it sets us in the right direction. The last of our Let's Talk series around artificial intelligence will be held on May 20th at 7:00 PM in the Gorton Center. This one is leaning into the community and their view of AI, so it'll be very interactive with those people who are in attendance. Some of the board members have been a part of one or both of the first two sessions. The first one was on artificial intelligence in the public sector and partnering with the Lake Forest College, and what's happening in the world of collegiate world. And the second series was AI in the workforce, so we had leaders in industry sharing their experiences with how AI is transforming their daily work experience. The third one is focused on community. On Thursday, April 3rd, in partnership with the APT, we are having an author study with Meg Kissinger talking about mental health, and she is sharing a story that is, the book is called While You Were Out. It is a vulnerable, powerful story around mental health and suicide as a person who was brought up in the North Shore, and it is, I think you will walk away, if you attend, and I encourage you to attend, with strategies and experiences that hopefully will help transform your relationship with the young people that are in your household, or other people you're interacting with. So, I am excited to hear that conversation, and I'll be there to kick it off. We're doing a lot of author work right now, which is, I'm a self-proclaimed bibliophile, so reading is what I do for fun, I should learn to golf. I am also excited to share that I will be interviewing Ellen Galinsky with a brand-new book, it's not out yet, it's coming out next week, I think, and it's called The Breakthrough Years. I met Ellen at the National Conference for Superintendents in February, and I have an early copy of her book, and I am going to be interviewing her through the Family Action Network, and this will be broadcast nationwide, this interview, which gives me a little bit of, I don't normally get nervous, but this is something that I think is her seminal work around the teenage years, and it's about a 400-page book. So, I am 100 pages into it right now, and I will tell you, as a dad of four children, I am already pivoting, and I feel as if I know young people, I feel like that's my day job, right? But what I'm learning, and what she's talking about, is she's surveying teenagers, I'm getting timed by cabinet right now on how long this has been, and I feel like this is, I'm going to lose tonight on how many minutes I'm talking, so I'm sorry. So, here's what's interesting, and so I really encourage you to listen, especially if you have teenagers, that she surveyed teenagers across the country on what they wanted adults to know. And then, she surveyed all the leading researchers on teenagers, and then she shared the similarities and differences between those two realities. And she is giving you real-time suggestions of how you can increase the likelihood that you have a positive relationship with teenagers that are in your household. And one thing that rings through to me, and something that I live and breathe, is that at times, we forget how we were when we were young, and we want to use, in her words, an adult measuring stick for our kids, forgetting how we were when we were teenagers. And then, the second thing is, teenagers are saying they want to be heard, and they have such valuable insight, and as an educator, that is what I live and breathe, listen to our students, you heard them tonight, they have wonderful insight that if you just take a moment and hear their stories, we are all stronger, and they are our future. So, that is on April 16th at 7:00 PM, and yes, you can tell that I'm geeking out a little bit, but I think it's going to be a powerful conversation. We have our next board coffee on April 24th from 6:30 to 7:30, and a big shout-out to Annie and John for being available and present for our community. There could be zero people, there could be 20 or 30 people, that's not the point, the point is that we are out, and the board presidents are listening to the concerns of our stakeholders, and making sure we create multiple different channels to get feedback to continue to meet our community's needs. That concludes the superintendent's report, and I apologize, it's a little bit more verbose than normal.
And I definitely vote for more like 20 to 30 people, I think when we had a good crowd last time, we really had a nice conversation, and were able to connect with people and answer questions one-on-one, so if you are free that evening, join me. Okay. The board will now hear public comment, subject to Board Policy 2230. The Lake Forest Boards of Education welcome public attendance and participation at all meetings. It's hoped that by utilizing these guidelines, participation will be maximized, both in terms of fairness and organization. At this point in the evening's agenda, this opportunity for public comment will be limited to comments about this meeting's agenda items only. Does anyone, is there anybody here who would like to address the board about items on this meeting's agenda? Okay, hearing none, we will turn to committee reports, and I will start with Monica to give a report from the Education Committee.
Thanks. We've had a lot of exciting meetings for the Ed Committee meeting, if I back up, we didn't get to talk about it at the last meeting because of a tornado, but in early February, we had a joint meeting, and I don't know if that's been done before, if it has been, it's been a while. But it was our full committee with our community members, members of 65, members of 115, and then administrators from all three of those districts, and the highlight was talking about transitions, and what they do, and what they could do better. We even collected some parent feedback to pass on to administration on how parents think it's going, and what they can do better, and I know there's already been some meetings as follow-up to that, so it was really engaging and exciting. The details for that one are in the minutes for the past board meeting. And then, later in February, February 29th, which Matt alluded to, we had just the 67 Ed Committee meeting. Ed Committee meeting, and we got to meet all of our instructional coaches in the district. The details on that discussion, again, are in the board report, so you can read details there. It was a good conversation. It's really interesting to hear what the instructional coaches do, because they are doing a lot for our teachers and our students, and it was a really valuable meeting. So that's what's going on with the Ed Committee. Our final meeting of the year will be on Thursday, April 11th.
Terrific. Any questions?
Yep, one question, Monica, and that is, the discussion of transitions that you referred to for the meeting in early February, I found really interesting, because I think there's some real opportunities there. What are the next steps? I'm curious when we can expect to hear more about some ideas that were, I saw the report on what ideas were discussed, but in terms of next steps, in terms of taking action and implementing some of those ideas, what do you think is the next step in that process?
Yeah, I don't know if I could put Jeff on the spot, because I think you've been part of some of those follow-up conversations.
Mark, are you talking more eighth to ninth, or fourth to fifth grade transitions?
Eighth to ninth.
Eighth to ninth. I think some of them are already being put into play, but I think they're looking for as early as next year. What are they, what are they going to be able to do with that? I think it's a bigger focus overall now with the transitions, not just with 67, but also with 65. But next year, we should already see some of those things put into place.
Alright, thanks.
Other questions?
Erin Leonard also has follow-up already. She shared out stuff after the initial meeting on the 29th on March 5th, about what she has learned from that, additional feedback that Monica shared, and notes of what the next steps are from her perspective, so I can share that out. And I think the Joint Committee is planning on meeting again, but I don't have that date as of yet. I know that Vale and Erin have been talking regularly since that February 29th meeting, and I have emails as recent as Wednesday, March 13th, as we're trying to select the next date. So it wasn't, I guess my point in interjecting is that this wasn't a great conversation, and we walked away and nothing's going to come from it. That's not how anybody works, especially not Dr. Erin Leonard.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Carl, would you like to talk about the Finance and Operations Committee?
Boy, would I ever. Good evening, everyone. So we held the last meeting on March 7th, and actually, I wasn't there, and Monica chaired it, so thank you so much, and from all reports, she, the meeting was the most effective and efficient meeting of the year, so thank you.
You're fired, Carl.
I think you're going to be the next nominee for this, it's going to be fantastic. So during the meeting, a few items were discussed, and some of them are on the agenda for tonight, but busing, food service, audit, psychological services, human resource, contract extension. All those items were discussed, including the Perkins and Will update on the Health and Life Safety Survey and the Capital Improvement Plan. And over the course of the next few Board of Education meetings, more information will come out with the Perkins and Will. Right, I guess our next meeting is scheduled for Thursday morning, May 2nd, at 7:30 here in this room, or one of the rooms, and if I can't be there, I know Monica will do a bang-up job doing it, so that concludes my report.
Carl, just to add, Perkins and Will was going to be with us tonight to give a similar update that what Finance and Ops received, and we decided to push them to April due to the Fallon Report and other topics.
I guess I should add that the presentation that was provided in the committee meeting is in the agenda. You'll be able to pull that up and look through all that wonderful information, but some of the details are in there already.
Any questions for Carl? Or Monica? Alright, Mark, can you give us a legislative update, please?
Sure. Things are busy down in Springfield with the spring session starting. Ed Redd is tracking 97 different bills, but three have kind of percolated to the top. I'm still in the process of discussing the district's thoughts on these with Matt and his team, so there's nothing for the board to do tonight, but the three that I wanted to flag, just for possible future consideration, are, one is a bill to deprioritize the use of schools as polling places. Start somewhere else before you get to the schools, and in order to use a school as a polling place, it needs board approval. The second bill is a bill to increase funding for those districts that have seen an influx of, what they're referring to as newcomers, which are immigrants, refugees, political asylum seekers, and the like, so that those districts that have seen an influx of those newcomers, that there's more aid from the state provided. The last bill is a bill to provide some aid for those districts that need to send special ed children out of district to other schools, looking at the school certainly covering, the district covering portion of that, but above a certain amount, the state would kick in funding for that special ed expense. So those are the three that have kind of risen to the top. I'm going to talk to Matt and his team, and we'll probably have more next month.
Any questions? Alright, we will move on to action items, and the first item on our agenda to approve is the 2024-2025 Administrative Compensation. So may I have a motion to approve the 2024-25 Administrative Compensation?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Would anybody like to discuss this agenda item? Okay, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Bernal?
Aye.
Mr. Carrar?
Aye.
Ms. Engelberg?
Yes.
Ms. Levert?
Aye.
Ms. Yon?
Yes.
Ms. Helms?
Aye.
Mr. Remus?
Yes.
Motion carries.
May I have a motion to approve the 2024-2025 Exempt Compensation?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Helms?
Aye.
Mr. Remus?
Yes.
Ms. Bernal?
Aye.
Ms. Yon?
Yes.
Ms. Levert?
Aye.
Mr. Carrar?
Aye.
Ms. Engelberg?
Yes.
Motion carries.
May I have a motion to approve the 2024-2025 Shared Services Compensation?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion about this item? Have a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Bernal?
Aye.
Ms. Helms?
Aye.
Ms. Levert?
Aye.
Mr. Carrar?
Aye.
Sorry. Ms. Engelberg?
Yes.
Ms. Yon?
Yes.
Mr. Remus?
Yes.
Motion carries.
May I have a motion to approve the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources Enabling Agreement in accordance with the previously approved compensation?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Carrar?
Aye.
Ms. Bernal?
Aye.
Mr. Remus?
Yes.
Ms. Yon?
Yes.
Ms. Levert?
Aye.
Ms. Helms?
Aye.
Ms. Engelberg?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Welcome, Phil. Again, new roll. May I have a motion to approve the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching, Learning, and Accountability Contract in accordance with the previously approved compensation?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Questions? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Levert?
Aye.
Ms. Helms?
Aye.
Ms. Yon?
Yes.
Mr. Carrar?
Even though she's not here, yes.
What'd you say?
Yes.
Ms. Engelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Remus?
Yes.
Ms. Bernal?
Aye.
Motion carries.
May I have a motion to approve the Landscaping Contract Award to Balanced Environments, Inc., in the amount of $68,410?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Discussions or questions about this? I don't know, Carl, you want to say anything about some of the things that came through Finance and Ops beyond your report? I'm sorry.
I defer to Monica, as she was actually chairing that meeting.
Yeah, this one was the result of the bidding process, and I don't know how long it had been since our prior bid, but this was the winning bidder from this round.
Any questions? Okay, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Yon?
Yes.
Mr. Carrar?
Yes.
Ms. Helms?
Aye.
Ms. Bernal?
Aye.
Mr. Remus?
Yes.
Ms. Levert?
Aye.
Ms. Engelberg?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Annie, before you move forward, can you read that green blurb in the middle, after action item five? Excuse me. With the approval of these compensation reports, meaning action items four and five, please note that the salaries for the District 67 and Shared Services Administrators under new one-year contracts or new multi-year contracts will be individually listed on the personnel report for the April board meeting. Thank you for letting me know that I skipped that. May I have a motion to approve the Quest Food Management Service Contract Renewal for 2024-2025?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments?
I had a quick question on this. In reading through the contract, there was something about an additional $10,000 for key KPIs. I was just wondering what the process looks like with those.
So we never settled on KPIs. Primarily, KPIs were used in food service that were tied more to revenue-enhancing kind of metrics. So we did spend some time on that with Quest, but we thought it potentially was counterintuitive to the student experience that we wanted to have, so we elected not to put those in place, so there is no additional $10,000 fee that they could earn by raising some particular measure.
So just want to add that we talked about it in our Finance and Ops Committee, and Alice raised a very good point, that it's been a while since we've gone out to bid for this. The last time we did, Quest was the only bidder, so I think we decided next year, this is one of them that we're going to try to get bids on.
If it was 2020.
How long has Quest been the food vendor?
You don't quote me, within a year or two, I could say probably 2008, because they were not the vendor when I first arrived, so they're probably, since then, we had bid it, as noted, in that time period.
Any other questions? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Engelberg?
Yes.
Ms. Helms?
Aye.
Ms. Bernal?
Aye.
Mr. Remus?
Yes.
Mr. Carrar?
Aye.
Ms. Yon?
Yes.
Ms. Levert?
Aye.
Motion carries.
May I have a motion to approve the additional contractual agency expenditures for Jolanta Tolzik, and I hope I said that right, and Soliet?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Remus?
Yes.
Ms. Engelberg?
Yes.
Ms. Levert?
Aye.
Ms. Yon?
Yes.
Ms. Helms?
Aye.
Mr. Carrar?
Aye.
Ms. Bernal?
Aye.
Motion carries.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the honorable dismissal of part-time, non-tenured teachers?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Could I just get some background on this resolution? I don't know if it's Jeff or Matt, but just some explanation and context would be helpful.
Sure. So as we were...
You have to talk into the microphone, sorry.
So as we were... Is this on? Okay. So as we were creating the staffing plan for the 24-25 school year, we looked at what positions were needed and where certain cuts would be made, and then the reduction in force comes down to people who have the lowest seniority or are part-time teachers, and so these are the staff that are on that list are the people that we don't have places for next year. Thank you.
Other questions?
See how good Phil's going to be next year.
Okay, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Helms?
Aye.
Mr. Remus?
Yes.
Ms. Yon?
Yes.
Ms. Engelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Carrar?
Aye.
Ms. Bernal?
Aye.
Ms. Levert?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Moving on to the consent agenda, a reminder that any item may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of a board member. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items, including approval of disbursements, payrolls, and financial statements for January 2024, approval of the Human Resources Report, minutes of an executive session from February 27, 2024, and minutes of a regular board meeting and workshop from February 27, 2024.
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Anything, well, I don't think we're going to discuss if it's a part of the consent agenda, and people don't want anything removed, so may I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Yon?
Yes.
Ms. Levert?
Aye.
Ms. Bernal?
Aye.
Ms. Helms?
Aye.
Mr. Remus?
Yes.
Ms. Engelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Carrar?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That does it for our action items. I will note that there have been a number of FOIA requests that have come in since the last meeting, and those are published in the board packet. And at this point in the evening, we will now have a second opportunity for public comment. Are there any members of the public now who would like to address the board about any topic?
Could we now take a moment and just have Melissa share a few words about Tom?
Please.
Thank you. So as you know, in recent weeks, we have been searching for our next Communications Manager. We had a strong response to our posting. We had about 25 candidates, qualified candidates, we narrowed it down to seven, and then we had three finalists. Tonight, I'm pleased to present to you a recommendation for Tom Garrity as our Communications Manager, serving District 67 and 115. Tom is a results-focused communications generalist, with diverse experience earned in media, education, and corporate communications. Tom's career began as an Emmy Award-winning photojournalist at WLSTV Channel 7. After almost a decade at Channel 7, Tom moved to New Tru High School, where he was responsible for multimedia, and all aspects of digital content and their AV labs. After about seven years there, seven-year itch, Tom moved to Allstate Insurance, supporting the company's digital transformation by enhancing internet search, launching employee engagement tools, and optimizing the company's digital platforms. In a phone call with one of Tom's references, she began with the reflection, "I could always count on Tom." He was characterized as a thoughtful listener, a tenacious problem solver, committed, collaborative, with a great sense of humor, which we know will come in very handy. So tonight, I am pleased to report that Tom will join our communications team on April 1st.
I just want to take a brief moment first to publicly thank Dr. Montgomery and Ms. Oakley for giving me this opportunity with the district, and also to the board for approving their recommendations, I appreciate that. As a parent of a fifth grader, I know how important it is to hear from your school and from your district, and it's also very nice every once in a while to get a peek inside the classroom to see what they're up to, and kind of the fun and exciting things that they do, and that they come home and tell you about, so it's nice to get those kind of communications as well. As you heard, I do have a background in corporate and school communication, as well as a number of years in news media, and I'm looking forward to being able to share the story of District 67. I had the opportunity recently to take a tour of Sheridan Elementary, and meet with some of the staff, and see the innovative ways that they're really engaging the students, and I look forward to that opportunity to share and tap into that energy and share it more broadly with a larger audience. So thank you.
Welcome, and I look forward to debating with you about the correct spelling of the last name Garrity. But we're really glad to have you. Welcome. Okay, a couple of announcements. I don't think I need to remind anyone that next week is spring break, and there will be no school for students and staff. School will resume on April first, twenty-twenty-four, and the Education Committee, as we've already heard, will be meeting on April eleventh. Our next Board of Education meeting will be here in the boardroom on April twenty-third, and that is all I have. With that, may I have a motion to adjourn the City of Lake Forest School District Sixty-seven Board Meeting for March nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Have a voice vote, please. All in favor, please indicate your assent.
Yes.
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.